Hello, everybody. It's so good to see everybody here. We've got eighty-four participants on the Zoom meeting. I know we have many more watching.
This meeting is being recorded.
This meeting is being recorded, so if people don't have a chance to watch then right now, then they can tune in later. But let's, for now, call this June twenty-second, two thousand and twenty-one virtual, very special administrative meeting of the Bernalillo County Commissioners to order. And today, because we're having such a special meeting, it's always just such a great sacred honor and duty to fill a vacancy in the state legislature. I asked somebody special to do our Pledge of Allegiance today. Somebody who spent eighteen years as a House Representative, and he was the House Majority Leader, as well as being elected Speaker of the House. And so we will have a moment of silence, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance led by Ken Martinez.
Thank you. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, sir. Ken Martinez, our county attorney. And Madam County Manager, are there any changes or additions to the agenda?
Madam Chair and Commissioners, there are no changes or additions.
Okay. I know that there is one change. I got a message that William Bone Trammell has ended his campaign for this seat. I thank him for participating, and we all wish him well. And before we get on to public comment, I just want to say that I think that this meeting is, especially for this seat, is gut-wrenching and wonderful. And I likened it to the process of giving birth. It's like there's so much anxiety and uncertainty, but then when the process starts, it just kind of flows. And then at the end, you have something brand-new. So I'm assuming that's how this meeting will go. And at the end, we'll have a new representative. And so there's a lot of speakers signed up. We had to limit it to thirty. And so that speakers are limited to the first thirty speakers who have signed up online. You will have sixty seconds to share your comments. You will then be notified when your time is up. You will then be muted and moved to the waiting room. And Julianne, we had talked about keeping time, and I know we talked about you flashing the little hand at the forty-five-second mark. And then at the sixty-second mark, when people's time is up, then you'll keep the little hand on. So can you just flash the hand again, so people know where you are on the screen? So, okay, so speakers can kind of keep track when they need to wrap up. And so, Julianne, I believe you'll be announcing three speakers at a time, so they can get ready. And then we will just kind of go right into it. Is that correct?
Yes, Madam Chair, that is correct.
Okay, then do you want to go ahead and announce the first three speakers?
Sure. We have, first up is Marshall Martinez, followed by Owen Brown, followed by Paulina Gomez.
Okay, go ahead, Marshall.
Madam Chair, members of the Commission, I'm Marshall Martinez, the Executive Director of Equality in New Mexico, the statewide LGBTQ civil rights organization. We've been working toward queer and trans liberation in New Mexico for over twenty-eight years. Nothing is for us without us. EQNM was proud to endorse Bunny Cruz for this appointment because we have been fighting for representation for our communities for a very long time. The struggles facing queer and trans people in New Mexico are the struggles of all of us, but they are felt much more deeply for trans folks. Poverty, hunger, homelessness, among our most dire crises in New Mexico, and right here in Bernalillo County. And all of them are faced at such higher rates among LGBTQ people. We have strong allies working daily to fix issues queer and trans people face. But it is not enough to rely on our allies to fix our problems. We must have community-driven solutions to our struggles. Our voices must be heard in the rooms where decisions are made. On behalf of Equality in New Mexico and the LGBTQ movement, I urge you to appoint Bunny Cruz to make history this LGBTQ Pride Month by putting the first-ever trans person in our state legislature. Because it is beyond time, and there is nothing for us without us.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Owen Brown, followed by Paulina Gomez, followed by John Allen.
Owen Brown, please unmute yourself and go ahead. I'm not seeing Owen.
Okay, he may have dropped off. Gomez.
Pauline Gomez.
Hello, my name is Paulina Gomez, and I'm here to speak on behalf of Idalia Lechuga. I'm Idalia during my time as an hermanita with Maná de Alburque, where she was a mentor to me and other young Latina girls who partook of the program. She's an inspiration to us all, and she has, with what she has done in her career as part of our community. She helps us and the Maná program, having recently raised money for us to, sorry, for us to have a more successful program this upcoming year. Recently, she's also helped me by partaking in my dissertation for graduate school. And she continues to help in any way she can. I believe that Idalia is the type of person that we need on this board, and she will do great things, both for the community and for young Latinas as an inspiration to us all. Thank you.
Thank you. Who's next, Julianne?
John Allen, followed by Pilare Alcazar, followed by Greg Sealy.
Hello, Commissioners and everybody. My name is John Allen. I'm a constituent and a leading instructor for law enforcement. During my career over the years, I have watched Pamela Herndon work with all, to include state representatives, senators, and many people within our community. Pamela has always fought and shown an alacrity for equality in working with all, not only for social justice, but various issues that concern our community. Pamela's passion and love for people is incontrovertible and shows that Pamela has the ability to work on issues immediately due to the relationships and the reputation that she has established over the years. House District Twenty-Eight will benefit from Pamela's knowledge, passion, and her drive. Respectfully, I thank you.
Thank you. Who's next?
Pilare Alcazar, followed by Greg Sealy, followed by Jerry Warner.
Good afternoon, Honorable Bernalillo County Commissioners. My name is Pilare Alcazar, and I'm a retired educator. I'm here to speak on behalf of Idalia Lechugatena. I met Ms. Tena at the Hispanic Heritage Committee and also as a part of Los Puentes Charter School. I believe that Ms. Idalia Tena has all the qualifications because she was a previous state senator. She has the experience. I think she's balanced, intellectually honest. She is committed, knowledgeable, motivated, positive, and ready to serve this community hundred percent. I respectfully ask the county commissioners to appoint Ms. Idalia Lechugatena as a state representative for District Twenty-Eight. We need more young, inspiring leaders in our community. Thank you.
Thank you. And Greg Sealy, I believe, is next.
Yes, hello. My name is Greg Sealy. I'm a lifelong Bernalillo County resident, a veteran of Operation Enduring Freedom. And let me just quickly offer a sincere thank you to all our commissioners and their incredible staff for all the work that they do. Period. I am here to offer my support for Ms. Michelle Peacock. As a veteran myself, I have seen the volunteer work she does, from work we've done together, including with the Democratic Party of New Mexico Veterans Caucus. I think she is incredibly qualified for this role. And I think that the moment that we're in right now really requires appointment to consider the fact that New Mexico is the third worst in our country for veterans serving in our state legislature. We only have seven, and we only have one woman who served in uniform, representing us in the State House. It's critical that our legislature matches our population. New Mexico has ten percent veterans, and our legislature should reflect that so that the veterans and the military families that do so much for our communities have the representation they need in Santa Fe. Thank you so much. Appreciate you.
Thank you. Who's next, Julianne?
Jerry Warner, Pamela Brighton, Lena Androluiz.
Okay, Jerry Warner. Please unmute yourself. I am not hearing Jerry Warner.
Okay, going on to Pamela Brighton.
Pamela Brighton. There's Pamela Brighton. Go ahead. You've got sixty seconds.
Yes, I would, I want to say I'm a retired psychotherapist, and I've been in New Mexico for about fifteen to twenty years now. I met Idalia, and I would say her last name, but I know I would butcher it. I sometimes butcher my own name, so please forgive me. But I stand with her. I have watched her grow and develop over the last seven years now. And what has been very constant with her is her respect for our community. And I think that's extremely important. And just to echo what Ms. Gonzalez had said, and really highlighted the importance of her being in our state at this point, is that she is an excellent mentor and model for young women. And I, especially for those who are immigrants and looking for a pathway to citizenship, I think this would be a wonderful flagship. She's done it, and they can see that.
Thank you, Pamela.
You're welcome.
Lanya Andolouiz.
I'm sorry, who was the first one? There was an echo.
My apologies. Lanya Andolouiz.
Okay, yeah, go ahead. You have sixty seconds. Julianne, put your hand down.
I'm a New Mexico native and District Five constituent. I was part of the Forum Saturday and listened closely to the other candidates. I felt like some of them wanted to reinvent the wheel. I disagree. We have a sound system. I think Michelle understands this and will be an advocate in our community to help individuals and families become more active in the space we create. An overall structure helps us navigate, but we sometimes need that special advocate, that individual who understands the details to help us dial in our energy and efforts. We have busy, uncomplicated lives. We need a representative in House District Twenty-Eight who will help us in sharing our voice. And when we can't be there, we trust her judgment in voting in our best interest because she participates, she advocates, and fights for our families. Please support Michelle Peacock for House District Twenty-Eight. Thank you.
Thank you. Who's next?
Diane Gibson, Monica Boyd, followed by Senator Hickey.
Good afternoon, Bernalillo County Commissioners, county officials. Thank you for this opportunity. My name is Diane Gibson. I'm City Councilor for District Seven. Very, very proud and happy and blessed, really, to have this, that, that job. I'm here today to speak on behalf of Ms. Pamela Herndon for the vacated state representative seat. And I confess, I'm going to be telling you probably things that you already know about her because she has been and continues to be a true partner and wonderful example of leadership and ethics in our community. She's worked, I've partnered with her, and she's helped other people on council on several different occasions, everything, just to name two things. Everything from gender pay equity to growing our local workforce through apprentice programs and technical education. I have been very fortunate to have worked with Ms. Herndon.
Counselor, your sixty seconds are up.
It went by so quickly.
Right? Thank you. Next is Monica Boyd.
Yes, hi, everyone. I'm a registered nurse, and I've had the privilege of working with Ms. Pamela Herndon. I think she will be a great asset to the House District Twenty-Eight. She truly cares about people. I've had the privilege of working with her over the years to help people in our communities. She was instrumental in bringing mobile mammograms into minority communities and in educating women regarding access to women's health care. She was also very instrumental in educating the Albuquerque community regarding the Affordable Care Act and helping to register people for health insurance. And we are currently working together to get more New Mexicans protected against COVID- nineteen by setting up vaccination sites. I've seen Ms. Herndon in action for the people. She is not one to sit back and do nothing. She will roll up her sleeves and work with and for the people.
Thank you. And next is Senator Martin Hickey.
Thank you, Madam Chair and Commissioners. I am very happy that you're going through this process, although I know it must be a difficult one. I was contacted by four of the candidates and offered them my viewpoints as someone who was new and running for my seat. And I found them all to be very strong, many great goals and what they've done in their lives. And I think they all would do very well in this situation. And I want to encourage, who, three out of four probably won't get appointed because they can only do one, but I want to encourage them to continue to engage in the political process. But there is one who stands out, and that is Pamela Herndon. And it's because of her track record. You'll hear more about her today. Southwest Community Law Center and IRS State. I think she would be a great individual representative for Twenty-Eight House District. Thank you.
Thank you, Senator Hickey. You made it in right under the sixty-second wire. Thank you. Who's up next, Julianne?
Janet Shaggin, followed by Amanda Valdez Andolouiz, followed by Angela Merkert.
Okay, Janet, go ahead.
Thank you for the opportunity to speak on behalf of Pamela Herndon, a CPA and attorney. Ms. Herndon has served as an attorney for the IRS, General Counsel for the New Mexico Regulation and Licensing Department, Deputy Cabinet Secretary for the New Mexico General Services Department, Assistant Attorney General for the State of New Mexico, the ED at the Southwest Women's Law Center, and has advocated for numerous bills, some of which are now part of New Mexico's laws. Ms. Herndon is the founder and president and CEO of the KWH Law Center for Social Justice and Change and is a WK Kellogg Fellow. I encourage you to appoint Pamela Herndon to fill the open seat in House District Twenty-Eight, and thank you very much.
Thank you. Amanda is next.
I do not see Amanda or Angela on in the attendees or the participants, so.
Okay, and one last call for either Amanda or Angela. If you're out there, let us know. Okay, let's move on.
Moving on to Nicole Alonovich, followed by Katie Stone.
Okay, Nicole, go ahead.
Chairwoman, members of the committee, my name is Nicole Alonovich, and I'm here as a woman, war veteran, disabled human, and concerned New Mexican. Today, you have a very important decision to make that not only affects House District Twenty-Eight, but the composition of our state legislature. I'm asking you to elect Michelle Peacock. It is simple. We do not have any female war veterans representing the constituents of our great state. Our voice is marginalized, and it needs to be addressed at the highest levels of government. Now is the first step. The events of January sixth have left our country and our state with the wrong impression of what it means to serve. Michelle is a VA nurse who has never stopped serving her country and community. As Greg Sealy stated, the statistics do not lie. It's time we elect a body that represents the literal population of New Mexico, someone who is not inundated in elected positions already, so they can get the job done. Michelle fits the bill. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Nicole. Moving on to Katie Stone.
Greetings, Commissioners. You face such a difficult choice today. I do not envy you before you are highly qualified candidates who are eager to lead in the New Mexico Legislature to fill Congresswoman Stansbury's seat. But among them, Michelle Peacock stands out. A three-time deployed veteran, she has demonstrated a lifetime of service to our nation. She's continuing in her service at the VA right now. She's a champion for the rights of women, veterans, and children in the state of New Mexico. Her leadership is proven. She's fearlessly committed to addressing the challenges that we're facing with mental health care, physical health care access, endemic poverty, child well-being, and our transitioning economy. I am proud to stand in support of this emerged graduate. And I would urge you to please appoint Michelle Peacock to the New Mexico Legislature. You'll be glad you did. Thank you all so much for serving on this commission. I appreciate you.
Thanks so much, Katie. Who's up next, Julianne?
We have Alexander Perrin, followed by DeeDee Feldman, followed by Morgana Jokil.
Okay, Alexander, take it away.
Hello, Commissioners. My name is Alex Perrin. I am a registered nurse and a new graduate nurse practitioner. And I'm here to urge you today to vote for Michelle Peacock to fulfill the empty seat in House District Twenty-Eight. Currently, nurses have zero representation in Santa Fe. And considering we are one of the largest labor groups in this state, this is a tragedy. There are no health care professionals with even half the experience that Michelle would bring to the table. And although we nurses dedicate our lives to making the community a healthier place, we do not have a seat at the table in terms of policy here in New Mexico, something that has relatively disappointed me in my time here. And amongst nurses, Michelle Peacock is one of our best and brightest. She has served our country internationally. She has served our veterans locally for over twenty years. She understands that all policy is health policy. She works tirelessly on boards and community boards. She has a proven track record of taking care of her community and powering those around her. She is a born leader who has earned this opportunity. Thank you.
Thank, thank you. And next up is the honorable former Senator DeeDee Feldman.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. Thanks for this opportunity. I'm a former New Mexico State Senator for sixteen years, and I'm here to support Pamela Herndon. I'm very familiar with her. She's a real professional. She's experienced. You know, a lot of people don't exactly have the skills it needs to be a legislator, but she has them. She's a lawyer. She's an advocate. She knows how to build communities within the African-American community and other communities, the women's community, the health care community. She's been there for all of them. And she presents herself as a professional, experienced woman, something we need in the legislature, as we need an African-American in this redistricting session coming up right now. So I urge you to appoint her, and I thank you for your service.
Thank you. Julianne, who's up next, please?
We have Morgana Jokil, Heather Obotusen, followed by Marge Elliston.
Okay, Morgana, please unmute yourself and make your statement, please.
I'm not seeing her on either room. We can, Heather.
Hi. Hello. My name's Heather Obotusen, and I'm here on behalf of Pamela Herndon. I have known Pamela for many years, ever since I started volunteering with the Albuquerque NAACP, where she's also our vice president. Pamela has always been the kind of person that stands up for people's rights, for women, people of color, and anyone in need, whether it's with her legal experience and long history of public service or just her kind heart. And that's why I ask y'all to consider appointing her to legislature. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up, Marg Elliston.
Thank you, Commissioners. Thank you for all your attention on this really important choice. I've worked closely with Pamela Herndon over the last three years. We served together on the leadership team of the Democratic Party of New Mexico. We faced challenges together, and we celebrated some wonderful, important victories. I've been so impressed by her dedication to our community and to improving the lives of everyone here. She worked on the 2020 census. She's worked on equal pay for women. She's struggled to get a fair shape for women and girls in sports. And she's represented her African-American community really well. Pamela is on the spot, speaking out and making changes. She's deeply rooted in our community. She serves on many boards and brings her voice to important issues. She brings her skills as a lawyer and a leader to the table today and will do so in the New Mexico State Legislature. She's a campaign veteran. She knows how to work with voters. And we're really lucky that she's stepping up to serve in District Twenty-Eight. With you, she'll be an excellent legislator. Thank you.
Who's up next, Julianne?
We have Dan Mayfield, followed by Marty Hartso, followed by Kenneth Winfrey.
Okay, Dan, go ahead.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. My name is Dan Mayfield. I am the Vice President of Government Affairs at the Credit Union Association of New Mexico, where we've had a chance to work closely with Pamela Herndon on several projects. I've worked with Pamela when she was at the Southwest Women's Law Center as Deputy Cabinet Secretary and at the Women's Center for Social Justice and Change and as a board member for U.S. Eagle Federal Credit Union, where she's worked to leverage the credit union's resources to help survivors of domestic violence. Pamela always thinks about New Mexico first. She'd be an excellent choice, and she's always put New Mexico first. Thank you very much, and good luck, Pamela.
Thank you. And next is Marty. Marty, if you're on, please unmute yourself and go ahead. I'm not hearing from Marty. So Kenneth is next on our list. Julianne, are you seeing Kenneth?
I am not seeing him in either room either.
Okay.
Move on to Juan Fernandez, followed by Antoneta Cidio Lopez, followed by Chelsea Casey.
Okay, go ahead, Juan.
Madam Chair, members of the Commission, my name is Juan Fernandez, and it's such an honor to stand here today on behalf of the Credit Union Association of New Mexico. I'm the newly selected president and CEO. On behalf of our more than nine-hundred-and-fifty-thousand credit union members in strong support of Pamela Herndon for this appointment, Pamela Herndon is ready to lead on day one. She has really dedicated her life to social justice, to gender and racial equality. And she is someone who really has the heart, the vision, the experience to be a fantastic legislator as we navigate life after COVID and rebuild our economy. So we strongly urge you to support Pamela Herndon as her next legislator. Thank you.
Thank you. Senator Antoneta Cidio Lopez is up next. Go ahead.
Thank you. Thank you very much, Commissioners. As you may remember, the last time I stood before you was the time that you gave me this opportunity to be a state senator. So I want to thank you for that. I've known Pamela Herndon for many years. And she, I'm trying not to be repetitive of all of the things, but she has been a lifelong or long, long-term member of her district, the district she's trying to serve. She's raised her children there. She has, her qualifications are impeccable. She has a stellar education. She has an amazing resume. And a point that I want to make is her tax background. Right now in the legislature, as you know, we don't have staff. And so that a lot, we rely a lot of the expertise on what members bring. And she has a tax background that would really help us as we deal with tax equity issues and the tax, many of the tax challenges we face in this transitional time. She has been an enormous, it's unusual to have a tax background and also a social justice background. I got to know her when she was the Director of the Southwest Women's Law Center, and she took.
Antonette, you'll have to wrap up.
She took that center to the next level. She took that center to the next level. I strongly encourage you. She'll be ready on day one. Thank you.
Okay, and Chelsea is next. Chris, Chelsea?
Good afternoon. Hi. My name is Chelsea Casey. As Michelle Peacock's R and Care Manager, I can attest to many professional and personal traits. Michelle is especially gifted with the ability to empower others. Michelle serves as a very diverse population of veterans, veterans from all demographics and walks of life. Michelle has created a safe clinic environment where her LGBT veterans feel safe and welcome. Her veterans who suffer from PTSD and substance use disorders know they can drop in at any time for help or just to talk. Did I mention she's a hard worker? Michelle is so committed to her veterans and their families that she left her clinic to go to another medical facility to hold the hand of one of her dying veterans. The veteran's family had so much confidence in Michelle that they did not want to make any more life-sustaining decisions without Michelle being there as part of the family. And the New Mexico House of Representatives does not need another lawyer. They need a medical professional in order to bring fresh perspectives and ideas to the table. Thank you for your consideration of Michelle Peacock.
Thank you. Who's next, Julianne?
The last two are Kristi Lawrence and Erin Stiles.
Okay, Kristi, take it away.
Madam Chair and honorable Commissioners, my name is Kristi Lawrence. I'm a small business owner, and I urge you to appoint Michelle Peacock to represent House District 28. I've been fortunate to know Michelle for many years, and I have known few people in my life who have the unwavering faith in our democratic government and the passion to serve that Michelle has. Michelle's entire life has been about service. She cared for her sick grandparents. She willingly went to war zones and served as an Army nurse. Then she came home, when she could have gone anywhere else, to House District 28, and continued to help veterans as a nurse practitioner supervisor at the VA. She's also advocated for those veterans, for her fellow nurse practitioners, and for homeless children in our community. Michelle is a natural-born advocate for people who need a champion. She's smart, keenly familiar with how our government works, and she knows how to work efficiently within that system. Michelle Peacock is exactly who the people of House District 28 and all of us need in our corner, so please appoint her. Thank you.
Thank you, Kristi. And Erin, you've waited this long. Go ahead.
Thank you so much. Good afternoon, Commissioners. It's an honor to be here and to speak on behalf of Michelle Peacock. As I mentioned in my emails, I went to nurse practitioner school with Michelle Peacock in 2010 and have had the honor of watching her career and her growth over those 10 years. She and I share patients, me in the civilian world with UNM and her across the city at the VA. She has so many wonderful skills and qualities that I so strongly desire to see represented in our Legislature. We value nurses so greatly in this state. It's commonly seen that nurses are the most trusted profession across the country, and I would love to see a nurse and an advanced-practice nurse in our Legislature. To me, there's almost nothing more important to represent in New Mexico than healthcare. We just ranked 49th in child well-being in the state, and we need to change that. As a nurse myself, I ask you to trust Michelle Peacock and appoint her today.
Okay, thank you. Julianne, have you noticed if any... If anyone has shown up that we... That who wasn't present at the beginning? I see we now have 90 participants in this meeting. And...
I am looking over the list, and I am not seeing any of the ones that were not present.
Okay, thank you very much. And thank you to all the speakers who made public comment. I wish we could do this in person. I know Zoom definitely has its limitations. I'm grateful for all of your input. And so then, moving on, we will hear from our applicants. And so each of you will have four minutes to speak, and then Commissioners will have an opportunity to ask questions or make comments for the applicants. So I'm going to go in alphabetical order by last name. If your last name is hyphenated, it'll be the first word of your last name. And so the first applicant, you have four minutes, Bunny Cruz.
Hello. Thank you for having me. My name is Bunny Cruz. I've lived in Albuquerque since 1982 and in District 28 for 16 years. I'm here to build New Mexico even stronger, to build meaningful initiatives to bridge the gaps in food access, housing, medical care, and the living wage, all root issues in our high crime rates. I'm here to ensure that as we pivot to a green economy, we do so in a way that we all prosper. In my nonprofit work, I've seen firsthand the needs of the community. I know the structural changes that need to be met so we can help low and even medium-income families access food and housing. The other day, I was giving out food and water to our unsheltered neighbors. The fact that we, the greatest nation on earth, have people living in their own filth is appalling to me. We have to do better. Fixing our homeless situation isn't a single item fix. It will take a multi-pronged approach, and I'm here for it. Yes, I would be the first trans woman to serve in this capacity for our state, and yes, it is historic, and that is not lost on me. But let's not get lost on our differences. Let's focus on how we are alike. Trans issues are communities' issues that we all face: access to food, housing, medical care, and the living wage in a climate that isn't destroying our planet. I envision a land of enchantment that is prosperous for all her inhabitants, one that guarantees public education, that gets her students prepared to feed themselves and their families in a home that is safe and affordable, one that seeking medical care will not leave anyone in financial devastation, one that is driving off the green economy, that is respectful to the needs and beliefs of everyone, especially our tribal relatives. I'm running to create a better future for everyone and move our state forward. Having been bullied from kindergarten until my senior year of high school, being homeless myself, overcoming addiction, on top of being a Latinx trans woman, I was not only living in the margins, but I had fell through all the cracks of a system that was not built for people like me. I didn't even have boots to pull myself up by, those proverbial bootstraps, but through sheer willpower and determination, I turned to volunteering. I chose to be in service to others. I have gone to bed hungry, and I woke up to no food to eat. I have been in recovery for 15 years. I have been to rock bottom, so I am relatable, and I know what services are needed for food access, rehab, housing, anti-bullying in schools, because I lived it and I beat it. I want to take that priceless knowledge to Santa Fe for my family and my neighbors in House District 28. What makes New Mexico such a great state is her people, specifically the diversity of her people. That diversity must be reflected in our elected officials. As an openly transgender person, I've never been in this interstate, and it's time we have a seat at the table. For those here today that have never met a trans person, this is what transgender looks like. I'm a daughter. I'm a daughter of a Vietnam vet. I'm an aunt, a sister, a friend, and I'm an animal lover, and I love the outdoors. I'm your neighbor right here in the best district in the state house, District 28, and I look forward to working with you as your next representative. I've been endorsed by state senators Hadda Neil, Candela Ria, DuHig and Hammond, state representatives Ferreras, Ortiz, and Montoya, as well as Equality New Mexico, Pan Parenthood, and I... Along with many community advocates and educators. Again, my name is Bunny Cruz, and I am seeking to join the New Mexico House and serve House District 28. Thank you for listening. Thank you for listening, gracias. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Bunny Cruz. And so next up is Pamela Herndon.
Thank you. My name is Pamela Herndon. My husband and I have lived in House District 28 for 30 years. We have raised our three children in the district. When my grandfather died, my grandmother was left to care for three children. She had difficulty purchasing a house as a single mother because women had a difficult time obtaining credit in their names or purchasing real estate for themselves. She was forced to marry a man that she did not love in order to get the home that she needed for herself and for her children. She often stated that she wanted to help other women from having to go through what she went through. My grandmother only had an eighth-grade education. Her goal was to make sure that all of her children graduated from college. My mother graduated from college and received her master's degree. She not only met the goal that my grandmother had set for her, but she exceeded the goal. At her funeral, my mother wanted her epitaph to be that she made a difference for somebody along the way. I inherited her compassion for working with others. I opened the KWH Law Center for Social Justice and Change, a nonprofit law center focused on raising the well-being of women, children, and families with children. My law center is named in honor of my mother, Catherine Wade Herndon. I have helped people in various ways, ranging from advocating for jobs to helping with educational goals. When the Affordable Care Act was ratified by the Supreme Court, I helped make sure that people around the state knew their options in getting health insurance. Many people, for the first time in their lives, they were able to get health insurance, and for the first time, they were able to have well checkups without there being a health crisis. During the pandemic, I have worked to make sure that individuals and families have not been evicted from their homes. My life's journey has led me to become an attorney. During my career, I have worked as a senior trial attorney for the largest tax firm in the country, the Internal Revenue Service. Accordingly, I uniquely... I am uniquely positioned to understand the tax issues that will be raised during the legislative session. I have held executive-level positions in state government, such as General Counsel and Deputy Cabinet Secretary. I understand budgets and the concept of developing budgets that will support the community initiatives that we need for strong, sustainable programs to help the people in our state. The person selected to fill House District 28 needs to be ready to step in and participate in the interim Legislative Committee hearings, understand budgets, and how tax and revenue support initiatives and programs. My background and experience shows that I am qualified in each of these areas. I will be a strong voice for House District 28. House District 28 is diverse, both economically and culturally, and my top priorities for the district is to reflect that diversity. So to each of the Commissioners, I'm asking for your vote to appoint me to fill the vacant position in House District 28, and thank you.
Thank you very much, Pamela Herndon. And now moving on to Idalia Lechugatena.
Thank you, Madam Chair and Members of the Commission. I want to thank you for your service, and I also want to congratulate all the applicants running for public office. I'm here today to share who I am and why I am the best candidate to be the next state representative for District 28. My name's Idalia Lechugatena. I was the first naturalized woman from Mexico to serve in the New Mexico Legislature in the history of our state. I'm an immigrant who's fluent in four languages, all which are spoken in House District 28. I'm an international ambassador for world peace, a small business owner who is pro-business, I'm a rancher, an artist, an avid violinist, a community advocate, and an animal lover. I was raised here in Albuquerque, and I'm a product of our schools. I'm a proud graduate of the University of New Mexico with degrees in economics, political science, international politics, and studies in Mexico, Spain, and France. And I also have published academic research on immigration. My entire adult life has been dedicated to serving the most need in Albuquerque. I have been on the front lines, working for change in our community for many years. I have six reasons why I'm the perfect fit for the appointment to House District 28. Number one, I'm a former New Mexico State Representative. I have the experience to hit the ground running day one because I know the legislative process. I serve in the House Taxation and Revenue Committee, and I help balance our state's budget. As an economist, we experience people while we face our economic recovery. Number two, I'm a proud Democrat with a record of voting in favor of our democratic values, but I've also demonstrated I can work in a bipartisan manner to get legislation passed. More than ever, we need bipartisanship in Santa Fe. Number three, I'm deeply involved in our community. I serve on several boards like Meals on Wheels of Albuquerque, Mana de Albuquerque, which we mentor young Latina women, the Glenwood Hills Neighbor Association, which is right here in House District 28, Los Puentes Charter School, which is a second-chance school with mental and emotional support, but I also serve in the Hispanic Heritage Committee and the Hispana Roundtable. I was happy to get $360,000 to two of my boards this year in this year's legislative session. Number four, I represent the demographics of my district, and I know the needs of the community. I've already canvassed 25 of the 28 precincts in this district, and I know the main issues. I could tell you the number one issue here is crime, more specifically, property crime. And unfortunately, I've been a victim of it too. But there are many other important issues, like making drugs... Prescription drugs affordable, social security tax, mental health, homelessness, economic recovery, education, transitioning into clean energy. I understand the hard work, what it takes to be a legislator, and I know what it takes to run for public office, to campaign, to go door-to-door, and to face discrimination for being young, for being an immigrant, and for being a woman of color. But I've never given up, and I will not give up. And I assure you that if appointed, I will retain... I will work very hard to retain the seat. Lastly, I am a public servant at heart. This is not about me. This is about our community and the interests of people in House District 28. I will always seek their advice and guidance because I'm the... I'm only the instrument to represent their agenda in the Legislature. And Commissioners, I want to work in collaboration with you. You will always have an open door with me to discuss the needs of Bernalillo County. Experience matters. I humbly ask for your support and your vote today. I am Idalia, the candidate of experience, progress, change, and diversity. Now let's start working for change. Vamos a luchar por un cambio. Thank you. Gracias.
And next up, Michelle Peacock.
Commissioners, I want to thank each of you for your thoughtful consideration in making this appointment. Thank you to each of my fellow applicants for sharing the desire to participate in the legislative process and represent our home in House District 28. It has been a privilege to learn about these strong women and committed public servants through this process. And no matter what today's outcome is, I look forward to working with you as we go forward. I know that everyone is different, and I want to tell you what makes me an advocate and want to represent our district. When I was in Afghanistan, I worked on a trauma team. Think tiny tents, small people. And it was 2009, and it was the largest amount of trauma that we had ever seen in Afghanistan at the time. And our team was at the heart of that. And one night, when I was sleeping, my team came in and woke me up and said, "Ma'am, ma'am, come to the trauma bay." So I grabbed my gear, and I ran over, and I could hear one of my soldiers, and I walked in the tent, and I saw him laying there with blood everywhere, and I thought, "What is going on?" And my medic said to me, "Ma'am, he won't let us touch him until you talk to him." So I went over and talked to him, and he said, "Ma'am, look, I put on my own tourniquet. Aren't you proud of me? See, when you're in war, tourniquets save lives." And I teach every single one of my medics and my soldiers to put on their own tourniquet. And I held his hand, and I said, "I'm so proud of you." And as soon as I did that, he relaxed, and my team got him ready for the OR, and we took him to the OR. And while he was in the OR, I called his mom, and I said, "I am so proud of your son. He is amazing. He volunteers. He saves lives." And he has these cute jokes that are kind of one-liners that make us all laugh. And he's going to be okay, and he has a long road, but I promise I have your back, and I'll take care of you, and I'll help. So after the OR, we cleaned, and I sat with my team. And I thought to myself, you know, I think my life is more than just being a trauma nurse or the chief nurse, right, or the leader, or the educator, but I have to be an advocate, and I had to be my soldier's advocate, and I have to teach lifelines, and I have to work for others. So since that moment, I have pushed myself in that role and constantly worked hard to learn more and do more for my community. And when I think about my soldier, I think about how I was able to provide an educational lifeline, a lifeline that he used to save his own life. And we need these lifelines more accessible for our communities. We need to have diverse perspectives at the table to come up with creative solutions, right, to take care of all of the challenges that we face. And as a veteran and a healthcare professional, I bring a particular perspective on the challenges that our communities face, and I address those root causes. I have worked on many of them throughout my career. I address physical and mental health outcomes and disparities. I focus on homelessness and economic inequality. And just like in that trauma bay, right, I bring a commitment to listening, to putting faith in teamwork, right? And making sure that I understand the needs of everyone in my community. And I've done that throughout my career. I've worked on outlay, I've done creative draft for legislation, and I am always driven by the voices and needs of our community. And as a mom and veteran, I urge you to choose me for House District 28. Thank you.
Thank you, Michelle Peacock. Next up is Matt Powell.
Thank you, everybody. It's a challenging time, and I believe we need a fresh set of eyes on our problems. I'm a businessperson. I'm supposed to be in a meeting right now for a client. Had to text him, hey, I'm running late. He wondered why. And I told him he was kind of shocked. I'm here volunteering because there's a silent voice that isn't here speaking right now. The, the people are here. I mean, the people that aren't here, people at work trying to find work right now, and they're affected by the decisions being made by our legislature. And right now, they live in a place that is 50th in education, 44th in economic growth, 45th in infrastructure, 49th in economic opportunity, and number three in crime. So all of those challenges are downstream from economics. And the people that aren't on here, they need people who want to make hard decisions and evaluate if their party platforms are working. So we need to set some goals. So what I plan to do, if I were to be selected, is I would first meet with law enforcement, civic and activist groups, other legislatures, county commissioners, and others, and ask what their goals are and how the legislature can help them. Once that's done, because there's not a whole lot of them versus the constituents, I'm going to go talk to the people that aren't here today, that didn't have time, that are at work or trying to get to work, and hold town halls and listen to them. Then I'm going to align what I find in the town halls with what our representatives said and create goals that we can work towards using all levels of civic duty and government. I'm about naming goals and achieving them. It's what I do every day. It's why I'm here. It's why I'm volunteering. I don't have to. So I'm, I hope I get it, and if I do, I want to bring a fresh set of eyes to these problems, someone from outside the government, but someone that recognizes all of your experience and wants to draw from it, and is willing to work across party lines, set and achieve goals. So whoever's selected, I'm open to working with you. Email me, call me. Let's work on ideas and connections and concepts to see if we can create a safer, healthier, educated, more economically prosperous New Mexico. Thank you for your consideration and hope everybody has a great day.
Thank you so much, Matt Powell. And last but not least, Tom Stahl.
Afternoon, ladies and gentlemen, or this afternoon. Ms. Baca has been kind enough to post my resume for your review. Those are the accomplishments of my professional career. I have decades of experience working with diverse teams throughout my 33 years in the military, as well as interfacing with multinational coalitions to accomplish a common goal. My experience as a corporate executive demanded my proficiency in establishing annual business plan and then meeting or exceeding those goals. That all translates into working well with those in the legislature to coordinate complex issues and make New Mexico a better place to live, work, and play. However, my resume does not tell you who I am. I am a man of faith. I am a husband. I have been married to my wife Diana for 44 years. I am a father. I have two sons who are military service. And I am a proud grandfather. That is enough about me. Let's talk about the issue at hand. The whole process of selecting an individual to fulfill the remaining term in the end is about the good people of House District 28. The bottom line to this selection process should not be about party, popularity, or any other criteria, but who best can represent the constituents of District 28, period. While I am registered Republican, once sworn into office, it is my obligation to represent all constituents of District 28 regardless of party. I am more interested in the concerns and priorities of District 28 constituents than about my party's platform. However, I think the state Republican Party platform is in sync with the people on the main issues such as gaining control of our out-of-control crime rate, opening up and improving our schools from 50th in the nation, and reviving our economy that was devastated over this last year by the COVID pandemic. During my campaign last year for House District 28, I canvassed each precinct in the district. I had the opportunity to witness our broad diversity and wide range of cultures. I am the only candidate, to my knowledge, who has personally walked every precinct in District 28. I have listened to constituents and small business authorities. Let's get a handle on crime, let's improve our schools, and let's get our people back to work. Those concerns are my concerns, and I will work tirelessly to address them. I appreciate the many letters of support and endorsements I have received. However, the votes of confidence I received that no other candidate can claim are the 7,220 votes I received from the good people of District 28 last November, and those votes came from Republicans, Democrats, and independents. I believe I am the most experienced and qualified individual to fill the position. This selection is not about me, but who the best fit to represent District 28. I am ready to assume my duties as representative immediately upon being sworn in. It would be an honor to be the next representative of House District 28. Thank you.
Thank you, Tom Stahl. And so now I'm going to open it up to the commissioners. Do you have any questions or comments for the applicants? Commissioner Barboia.
Yeah, I'd like to ask, right, it, of all the, to keep it short, but of the candidates, what really, what kind of support do you have in community? And how does that ensure that you can have a win in our, in the election? And what does your commitment look like to that?
Okay, so the question is, what kind of support do you have in the community? Did I, did I get that? Okay. So then I'll just run down the list alphabetically. In fact, I'm going to go the, in the other direction, just to mix it up. So Tom Stahl, what kind of support do you have in the community?
Thank you. I think my ending comments there that as I ran my campaign last year, I ran a very competitive campaign against Melanie Stansberry. And I have continued in that process and I think I'm showing that I do have a lot of backing as we head into the 2022 campaign. So to answer your question, I feel very good about those possibilities.
Okay, thank you. Matt Powell.
Well, I don't have rank, name recognition. Never, haven't done this before, but I think once people see the job that I do and that we're setting goals and we're achieving goals and I'm pulling everybody together, I'll probably have a lot of support versus one group or another group. I don't want to represent certain demographics or, you know, certain parties or anything like that. I'm just tired of this, to be honest with you. I'm tired of living in it. And I really want to go out there and use the experience I have. I work with municipalities all over the country to solve problems, to go out there and solve it. So, you know, give me seven months, give me a year, we'll see how much support I have at the end. But I bet you have a lot because they're going to see how hard I work and the ideas that I bring to the table and how much I work with everybody here, listen to them, and take them into account because it's about being a representative, not Republican or Democrat. It's about going up and doing a good job as a legislator to accomplish the goals within the parameters of what the legislator's role is.
Thank you. Michelle Peacock.
So I'm very fortunate to have grown up in this district. So I went to Monzano High School, and I used my Christmas list to attack, to find everyone in House District 28 that I already knew, and we already have Christmas and kids' parties together. And from that, I, I have tons of support, but really it is, I've had over 75 people email the commission that are in this area. I have the backing of the Nurses Association, the Nurse Practitioners in this group that I have helped, and they have helped me and raised me as a good member of society. I have the Democratic Veteran Caucus. I have the Steel Workers Union. I'm a proud, proud, proud Planned Parenthood endorsement. And the Sierra Club, all of whom represent our district. And I'm very honored to work for them. And I have walked and walked and walked myself, even if I was pregnant or non-pregnant, and the kids come with me. So I'm part of House District 28, just like everyone, and we're all going to work together. And I take, I take up all of you on that commitment to talk to each other and work together because we can work together to make change, and you're right.
Thank you. Marcy May. Oh, Marcy, please unmute yourself.
Sorry about that. I think if you would ask my son and my husband how many trips we get out without me stopping and talking with people from all over our community, they would say never. I have a lot of different connections with our community from our taekwondo, our the families and groups, multiple groups across the city that we have been in connection with. I talk with business owners. I talk with multiple people. I'm approachable. And I'm able to get resources and connect with people that maybe other people wouldn't get, have connections with. But, you know, that's, that's one of the things is the communication.
Thank you. Idalia Luchugatena.
Thank you, Madam Chair, Commissioner Barboia. So last year, I ran for state senate in this district. I did win Election Day vote, but because the pandemic hit right in the middle of the primaries, it unbalanced a few things. I lost by 400 votes, but I'm here in precinct 565. I'm on Ward 28C. I have a lot of supportive and encouragement. That's why I submitted my name because I got calls and emails from neighbors and from the community that encouraged me to apply. I've submitted a list of endorsements in quotes from elected officials and groups. And I have a variety of not only the Hispanic groups, but I have the Muslim community. I have the Asian community. I have a very diverse set of endorsements that were submitted to you in my packet. And I am supported by a lot of groups that unfortunately cannot get politically involved, but they, they, they have my back. Thank you, Madam Chair, Commissioner Barboia.
Thank you, Idalia Luchugatena. And last but not least, Bunny Cruz.
Thank you, Commissioner Barboia, for that great question. In my 20-something years of community work, I built a coalition of volunteers and supporters that are ready to hit the neighborhoods with me. I'm here today with Representative Barreras. She's going to be knocking on doors with me. Like, Idalia, I have a lot of nonprofits and other places that can't get politically involved, but they're ready to help away from the nonprofit. I have a strong relationship with a lot of indigenous leaders. And I'm ready to hit the ground running. They're ready to hit the ground running. I have a campaign manager, a campaign kitchen cabinet, a campaign treasurer, and we're ready to start working at 6 o'clock tonight when we make your decision. Thank you.
Madam Chair, I just wanted to point out that you didn't call my name.
Oh, you're right. Oh, my goodness. I'm so sorry. I put my finger in the wrong place on the list. I'm sorry. Go ahead, Pamela Herndon, and thank you, Bunny Cruz.
So I have supporting me a campaign, a campaign committee that has been forming with my neighbors and various people throughout the, throughout the city. I have a coalition of grassroots communities that are standing behind me. I have worked throughout my entire career working with individuals and organizations that work to lift the well-being of people in the state of New Mexico. I have a campaign finance committee that's working and forming and helping me. The legislators that you heard from today are standing behind me. They have pledged to work with me. I am endorsed by Planned Parenthood, and I have walked our district to get people registered to vote. I've been involved in GOTV campaigns with countless candidates. I am a woman of faith, and my pastor provided a letter to each and to the commissions saying this is a woman who will look out for the entire community. I have, I have absolutely stood together, and you all have received petitions with over, from over 400 people showing that they stand with me, they support me, and they are with me, and that they think that I will be a strong voice for the House District 28. So that's just about a picture of the people that are standing with me, the community support that I have, including nonprofit organizations and others, from the NAACP to the AAU to the American Association of Universal Women, all the way to grassroots organizations. Those organizations will not individually endorse me, but the members of those organizations are standing with me, and thank you.
Thank you so much, Pamela Herndon. And so are there any other questions from the commissioners?
Madam Chair.
Commissioner Casada.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just kind of want to know how the process will go moving forward. So are we going to be able to speak and then nominate? And then, so then, and then second, and then we do that for each person who gets a nomination? And then we go back and vote? Is that how it's going to work?
Okay. Yeah, yeah. Thanks for your question. I know I've gotten that question a lot. And so I, I just want to make sure if there's any other questions for the candidates, let's get those out of the way, and then we'll go to that nominating and voting process and really kind of detail what's going to happen there. Okay? Commissioner Barboia.
Thank you, Madam Chair and commissioners. And if I may, I have two questions. I'll let you know I have two questions now for two different candidates. I'd first just like to add, to address Ms. Bunny Cruz. I, first I want to say sorry for the way that somebody decided to use their time to spread hate instead of support, and I just thank you for being so brave. I have, I fell in my own race. I, you know, lots of parts of my life were exposed and, and that I had to stand up for. And I think it's what makes me a strong candidate. I think being the only queer person on the commission, at least out queer person on the commission, that it brings a special conversation and representation to not only people in my own family, blood and affinity, but to what it means when decisions that sometimes I see politicians make that are well-intended, but don't often get to the real, it can sometimes cause harm. So I want to ask you, Ms. Bunny Cruz, what do you think it means in this historic moment when you've been brave enough to step up and really put yourself out there as a trans Latina in this step to try and get better representation within our legislature? How does that representation mean for you? And, and how, and what, what makes the difference when we, why, why should we elect a trans Latina right now?
Because my identities intersect, you know, as a Latina, as a trans woman, as someone that has experienced addiction, or has experienced hunger and lack of housing. To not have a seat at the table, be it me or another trans person, there, we can't move forward if we're not at the table. And that's what this means to me, being at the table, you know, to make decisions for my community, not just the trans community, but the community as a whole. No, but as a trans person, we need to see that, one, one of the tables, there's a lot of tables. And we need to leave, at least to see that one of the tables that are legislating our rights and our livelihood.
Marcy. Marcy, as the chair of this commission, I find that very much out of line and inappropriate. And right now, I'm going to ask Julianne to please stop your video.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
It's fine, but I was called hateful for defending children. And I think that's wrong.
Well, perhaps you can have a conversation later on. But again, I'm the chair of this meeting. I'm keeping order in this meeting. So we will need to mute you and stop your camera. And if you continue to try to act up, we'll have to remove, remove you from the meeting. Thank you. Go, go ahead, Commissioner Barboa.
Thank you very much, Madam Chair, for that. It's important that we interview. And thank you. And I, my next question is for, I'm trying to find her, Ms. Michelle Peacock. There she is. I am a Miss Jaws. So I get to work in the state legislature for the last 12 years here around. And I think we are missing veterans' voices, specifically war veteran voices and really healthcare voices and healthcare professionals. So I'd just like to ask you to, one more time, tell us a little bit about your experience as a veteran, as a war veteran, as a nurse practitioner, and what that brings to the state legislature.
Thank you so much. Before I start, Bunny, I love you. And so to go forward, the thing about being a woman veteran is that people don't recognize you as a woman veteran. I don't often wear a hat or a t-shirt that explains that I'm a woman veteran. And in my career, I've had to work to get women veteran services. We have lots of services for veterans and I love all the services that we provide for veterans. But sometimes our healthcare is missing. And so as a woman veteran, I've had to get money and advocate for opening women's clinics and doing, so we do a thing where we travel all around rural New Mexico to provide healthcare for women. Because when you're a woman veteran and you're in a small town, you don't necessarily want the person that you work next to, right, to do your healthcare. So I have done that. And that's been my experience where people think, oh, you're a woman veteran. You haven't deployed. And I have to say, I actually have done a million dismantled patrols. Okay, maybe five, but it seems like a million. I've taken Blackhawks everywhere. I have fallen out of a helicopter once. That was awesome for my back and my shoulder. But at the same time, I know that when we have a voice, right? So as a nurse and a veteran, I see the whole picture, right? I see that our economy is related to our health and our health is related to having mental health and physical health and also providing services for everyone. So at the VA, we provide services for every single person and we create safe environments. And so as, that's kind of my experience and what I bring to the table. And last year, when I was at the legislature, I had the great opportunity to talk to everyone from both sides of the aisle. Because as a veteran, people, it kind of gets you in the door, right? So you have this unique experience, which all of our panelists have, right? They have unique experiences and we get in the door and we say, hey, let me tell you. And then also let me listen, right? Because we women veterans were used to listening. So that's that unique experience. And one more time, Bunny, I love you. I'm sorry that happened.
Thank you. Commissioner Benson.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So thank you, all of the participants here. This does take a lot of courage and, and I'm thrilled to see people wanting to be involved in our legislative process. But this is a different type of an appointment. It's not a traditional election. And having gone through an election, there's a lot of value that comes from it. Knocking on doors, talking with lots of people from lots of different backgrounds and getting feedback and then really understanding your district. So, and this is more like, you know, the Electoral College, where you don't have to do that. You're going to be appointed by five people. So my concern is there's a lot of conflict in the state house right now and state senate. A lot of it is along party lines. So what, what can you tell me about your position? Give me confidence that you would represent your constituents, all of your constituents, to make Albuquerque a better place? What I learned, regardless of party I'm not to, is that in my district, crime, lack of jobs and education or, and poor performing education were some of the largest concerns across party lines, demographics, it didn't matter what. So if you get appointed, how will you represent your constituents, regardless of party, regardless of demographics? And I'm curious, because you don't have to go and knock on doors right now. And some of you have, which props to, props to those folks. Some of you have it. And yeah, I'd like to hear that perspective.
Okay. And that's a question for all the candidates?
Yes, please.
Okay. I'll just start in the middle of the list, Michelle Peacock.
Awesome. Thank you so much for that opportunity, Commissioner Benson, to respond. You know, one thing I say is that when people come into my clinic, I don't ask them if they're a D or an R. I don't ask them what party line they are. I ask them to tell their story. And part of being a healthcare provider is listening to their story. So I always say 80% of the visit is them telling me the story and what's their concerns and actually being engaged in listening. And then there's a tiny part where I do a physical assessment, right? And then the larger other part is making a plan with them. And this has been a great experience because I've had to cold call people I've never talked to before, right? So what my friends have done who are in the district say, oh, call this person. You don't know them, but call them, ask them. And so I think the key is understanding that we are appointed, right? So from here on, as appointed, we take that list of the 29,000 people in House District 28, and we call them and say, hey, we're in it together. We're in it to win it. What's your priority, right? And write it down. And then what I've heard is the same thing that you have heard, Commissioner. It's that we're tired of not being able to park our car outside and we're tired of getting broken into. We want our kids to have a great education, right? And we want to support the teachers who do the work every day. Okay? And we want great healthcare. So ours is healthcare and economy, and they're both linked, right? So healthcare workers and economy actually go hand in hand, just like Kirkland goes hand in hand and Sandia, and then great businesses like, you know, NPR was talking about Amazon today. So all of those go hand in hand to build our economy, but we have to have good healthcare. So that is what I have learned from each of the people that I've called in this district. And because I don't have to worry about, you know, other things, right? I have a husband that's going to watch the kids, the mini peacocks, and I can move forward and be committed like I am in everything I do. I'm going to make those calls and continue to be a good human and respect their wishes and listen to them. So that's what I'm going to do.
Thank you. Matt Powell.
I appreciate the question. I think one advantage I have is, is I have no preconceived notions of party. Am I Republican? Yes. But I think in terms of the state party, maybe I have a little bit different of a version of Republicanism than they do. But I grew up in a Democrat household. My dad was a Democrat politician. So I understand the Democrat Party really well. No one's going, oh, here comes the Republican or the Democrat. Everybody's going to go, okay, who is this? So the first thing I would do in terms of representation is everybody on here that's running, I'm going to go to every one of you first and have a little bit of a, kind of a take-me-to-your-leader moment. Let's go talk. Take me to these groups. Take me to the people that have, you know, endorsed you. Let's talk about this. And then let's find the goals that are achievable within the parameters of the role that I'm being selected to. I don't want to take city council goals to the legislature. I don't want to take the mayor goals to the legislature. I want to take the goals, that's why I said I want to go meet with other representatives and find out how to do a good job. And then go meet with everybody and say, how can the legislature serve you best? Then take those goals that all of you have helped me develop and then go and, I mean, work the job as best I can to the, to the limit that I can. And maybe I don't run again. Maybe it's just a seven-month rush to get the people that aren't on here, their concerns and the top concerns from everybody and do a little bit of a real alignment. What is, what is this role able to accomplish? And let's pick three to five goals for crime, education, healthcare, the economy. And then let's go up there and figure out what we can do. Maybe we go outside the state and we find solutions to match up with those and bring it back and introduce programs that can be utilized within the budget. So, no, I don't have a lot of endorsements and this is my first time doing it. But I also run a $70 million business. I know throughout the country, throughout Europe as well. I know how to do this in terms of talking to people, finding out what we can do within the role that I have and then getting those. So everybody, if I'm selected, is getting a call and we're going everywhere. And we're going to find out from every group. I'm going to rely on all of you. I'm selected, not elected. So I'm trying to meet that middle ground to get everybody's representation, but also develop goals that the actual role can do as a legislator, what can fit in the budget, that we can achieve some things. Then we'll re-approach down the road and maybe I find out I don't like being a representative. But I've given it that burn for that period of time to make sure that I have a voice for everybody that's not on here and all of your groups as well.
Thank you. Tom Stahl. Tom Stahl? Answer the question, please.
Thank you. Sure. Commissioner Benson, I appreciate the question that, that you have asked as far as how we integrate everyone's viewpoints once we are elected into office, regardless of party. And as I said in my presentation, once sworn into the office, it's our obligation that we talk to everyone and we listen to everyone's inputs. I look at this a little differently than maybe a lot of people do. And I really respect Michelle Peacock's viewpoints and where she's coming from as a veteran. And I think all of us who have served in the military, we've got a little different perspective. Because what we've done, what we've seen and what the military teaches you. And the culture of the military is totally different. And it has to be for a reason. But in the military, for one thing, the military has to try and keep itself as apolitical as possible. And within that process, one of the things that military does is when people come into a unit, and I think Michelle would agree with me on this, is that when you bring people into a unit, one of the things that military leadership has to do, priority one is mission accomplishment. But second only to mission accomplishment is that you have, that unit cohesion is the next part of that. That's my grandson. Excuse me. Cohesion is what you get the mission accomplished from. And it doesn't matter whether those people have Ds or Rs behind their name, what their gender is, what their race is, what their religion is. We're all Americans. And in the military, that's how we get the job done. So after 33 years in the military, my perspective is, is that that's how I would get the job done. Trying to look at people is that as New Mexicans, we've all got to work together to get the job done. Yes, we have different viewpoints. We've got different perspectives. And there are certain things that we feel very strongly about. But we need to sit down and talk about those and do what's best for New Mexico to make it a better place to live. But yeah, after 33 years in the military, I've got a little different viewpoint. But I think because of that, I think I could a little better than maybe some other people because of that 33 years. That's my answer and I'm keeping to it.
Thank you. Tom Stahl. Next, Bunny Cruz.
When I'm out on the street giving out food, giving out clothing, when I'm at the center and the chairperson of, I'm not asking people, are you a Democrat or Republican? I'm just, I'm just there to help. Being raised by a combat veteran myself from the Vietnam era and a Mexican mother on a military basis, it was very multicultural. And we didn't ask, you know, are you, my parents didn't ask, are your kids Democrats or your kids Republicans? They let us play with everybody. And, you know, my parents are right here with me right now. They raised me just to help people, just to, if someone needs help, you help them. And sometimes people don't ask for help, but you can tell they need help. It doesn't matter if they're Democrat, Republican, documented or undocumented, trans or cis, gay, straight, black, white, whatever, you just help people. So that's what I want to do with District, in District 28, is continue my lifelong work of just helping people, no matter if they're a D or an R or an I or not even registered voters. I just want to help everybody. Thank you for that great question, Commissioner Benson.
Thank you, Bunny Cruz. Next, Pamela Herndon.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I say to you, Commissioner Benson, that my history and work within the community shows that it has been cross-cultural and without regard to political parties. And let me give you some, some specific examples. When the Affordable Care Act was passed and I was out helping people get enrolled in the healthcare, it didn't matter whether they were Republicans or Democrats, whether they were rich or poor. But what was important is that every single person in the state of New Mexico had access to healthcare. When it was time to get the census count for the state of New Mexico, I didn't ask people whether they were Republican or Democrat. What I did was make sure that we got every single person counted because it was important for the resources that were available in our state so that we could lift every single person and every single community. When it came to women and we were looking at, there was no, that fair pay for women? And how do we ensure that women are paid fairly and equally for the work that we do? It wasn't whether you were a Democrat or a Republican, but it was women and that we were lifting each other up and that we wanted to make sure that we were getting the resources and the pay and the wages that we deserve. In addition, when it came to voter registration, I am a certified voter registration agent. And when I go out to register people to vote, I don't ask what their political party is. What it is important is that voices are heard and that people's right to vote is protected. When I look at our education system and I look at the fact that 25% of our students in the ninth grade are reading at proficiency or that 13% are at math proficiency, it doesn't matter whether they come from a family of Democrats or Republicans. What does matter is that we have kids who are not excelling at the matter and at the rate that they should be. And I care about them. And I work within the Albuquerque Public School System as a part of a bigger summit where we're looking at what is happening to our children and what do we need to do to lift them up? I will tell you that when Melanie Stansberry initially ran for this position in House District 28 over two and a half years ago, I was standing right there beside her. And when we went out to knock on doors, we did not tell people that, oh, we're here as a Democrat. And we did not ask them whether or not they were Republican. What we did was we asked people about what was important to them. What were the issues that we needed to resolve in this community? And so that's the way I have worked. That's the way I will continue to work. And I will say to you that it doesn't matter whether, whether people are, that people are red or blue, what does matter is that we are working to lift our communities and that for the well-being of the people of this district, we will be working together. And that's what I've done in the past and that's what I will continue to do.
Thank you, Pamela Herndon. Next up, Adalia Lachugatena.
Thank you, Madam Chair, Commissioner Benson. You know, as a former state representative, it's, it's very difficult on some of the votes that you have to take in the New Mexico legislature. But one thing about me is that I've always done the right thing. This is not about me. It's about our community. It's about the It's about the interests of House District twenty-eight. And if House District twenty-eight is successful, the whole community is successful. The city of Albuquerque is successful, the county is successful. I will always do the right thing. And when, if I don't know how to vote at an issue or if I don't know something, I will ask. And I want to reach out to the community and seek guidance and advice because representing thirty thousand people in the New Mexico legislature is a very, very serious job. And I've always done that and I will continue to do that. I am a woman of faith, I am a Catholic and I always, you know, seek, I pray when I don't know how to, you know, vote on difficult topics that will arise in the New Mexico legislature. But I have a record of, of working across the aisle with Republicans, with Democrats, with independents, with everyone. And at the end of the day, is the needs of the people of House District twenty-eight. Unfortunately, you know, politics has gotten extreme on both sides, on all sides, actually. But with me, you're going to get somebody that's going to do the right thing, even if it means losing political capital. And I've been there before, I've been attacked by special interest groups, but you know what? I've always done the right thing. I want an open door with everyone, with the constituents of House District twenty-eight, with all of the commissioners. Commissioner Benson, I know you're the only Republican, but I want to be able to reach out to you and seek your advice and guidance. And however I can be of help in the legislature, rest assured you can contact me anytime. Thank you, Madam Chair, Commissioner Benson.
Okay, thank you, Adalia Luchugatena. And Marcy May, you may turn on your camera and audio and answer the question. However, you know, you've been warned, if there's anything inappropriate, we will remove you from the meeting. So please answer the question.
I apologize, I did not get to hear. I thought that I was going to be muted from the rest of the conversation. Can you repeat the question?
Commissioner Benson?
Yes, question is, this is an appointment, it's not an election, not in a traditional sense. So there's a lot less work involved in winning this, this appointment. How can we be assured that you, if appointed, would represent all aspects, regardless of party, regardless of demographic and of any sort? How would we know that you're representing that? As I said in the earlier question, one of the benefits of knocking on doors is you get to hear everybody's perspective. And then if you win their vote, that means they really felt heard. So that's it in a nutshell.
Okay, thank you. And thank you for asking and inviting me to comment. I, I think one thing that we can know who people are is their past actions. And personally, I've, I've had people in my home who, who are transgender. I actually had a drag queen come to my home because they didn't have family that would accept them. We've given them birthday parties because I feel that people need to be valued as human beings. That's who I am. I've met, like I said, I've met so many people from all over New Mexico, very, very different from me. And yet we find a common thread of freedom and protection and making sure that people are taken care of. I believe my past actions and standing up for those who have been abused. And I helped to actually organize a sex trafficking awareness organization called Limitless back in twenty fifteen, where we really ministered to over a hundred women from all walks of life and actually men, women, and, you know, every, every area. And we gave them an evening where they were treasured and honored just as a person without an agenda. That's who I am. And I have a lot, a lot of friends who'd be able to tell you that. I believe that we all have value and our kids need to be protected. That's my, that's my heart.
Thank you, Marcy May.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Commissioner Casada?
I don't have a question. I'm, I'm, I'm going to make my comment and then I'd like to make my nomination.
Okay, can we, can I go into the?
Sure.
Okay, I, I just want to talk about how this is going to work. And so a lot of people have asked about this. And so what's going to happen now, if, if there's no other questions, I just want to make sure that all the commissioners have, who have questions have been able to ask them. Okay, so what is going to happen now is that we are, we will go into the nomination and voting process. I, I guess I just want to say first that this is, this is my district. House District twenty-eight is completely in my district. And so I, I'd kind of like to talk about that and then every commissioner can have a chance to talk about where they're coming from. But I, I remember in twenty eighteen, that was also my election year. I remember canvassing in House District twenty-eight. So I've met, I've met a lot of you, I've knocked, knocked on many, many doors myself. And I know what a diverse district that is. And it, I think, is just such a credit to that district that we have such a diverse slate of candidates here this evening. And so I just want to honor that. And I, I know that this has been a very, just gut-wrenching decision for a lot of us on the commission because there's so many great people here. And, you know, I've known, I've known many of you for several years, some I've just met through this process. But Bunny, I want to say I love you too. To know Bunny is to love Bunny. And I have come to, you know, know and, and appreciate all of you for your hearts, for your hard work. As Melanie would say, Melanie Stansberry, who is now our U.S. Congresswoman from House District twenty-eight, your, your grit, determination and heart. So I appreciate all of you and I wish you all well. I've, we have received, we actually, at my office, we kept a tally of all the emails we got. So I think there were two hundred and ninety-two, almost three hundred emails. And the majority of those from people within the district were for Pamela Herndon, so I will nominate Pamela Herndon. And do I have a second?
Second.
Oh, thank you. So, so how this works is now this nomination will stand because there's a nomination and a second. And so I know Commissioner Casada, you wanted to jump in, so why don't you go ahead? And then afterward, we're just, we're going to go back and vote. So first, we're taking nominations in seconds.
Thank you, Madam Chair. First of all, I've talked to a few of the candidates. And I asked them all a simple question. If you do not get appointed, are you going to run for this office? That's very important to me. Because if you're passionate about representing this district, then you will take that, that passion and move it forward. And, and because it's important, as you could, as you could hear us all, that we were all talking about how important it is to knock on doors, how important it is to make sure that people are represented. I'll tell you, as, as a county commissioner who wants, who feels anybody underserved is me. I'm probably the first stand-up comedian actor to serve at any capacity here in Albuquerque, New Mexico. People don't take me serious. But as you know, since I've become a county commissioner, they take me dead serious now. Because I truly work for all people. At once I was elected, that I work for all people. And it's not an easy thing to do, just to let you know. It's a very difficult thing, not for your constituents, but with your colleagues and with special interest groups. So I, I think you're all extremely qualified. I mentioned my job because this is a democracy that is set up for the farmer and the butcher and, and, and all those people to be sitting at the table to make decisions, not just lawyers, developers, business professionals, but all people. And so I think this group and veterans, for that matter. And so I think this group is extremely diverse. I'm looking forward to this election. And for those of you who run, I'm looking forward to who really the district wants for their representation because the people will speak rather soon. I appreciate you all. I think you're all fantastic. But since I do have somewhat of a choice of how I think things are going to affect my district and who represents, you know, the state on my behalf for my district, I think you all touched on everything that we work on as commissioners. But one stood out for me because I represent a lot of the immigrant community, the undocumented community. They are also people who absolutely have no voice. I've become that voice, I, I believe, on the commission with the support of the rest of the commissioners. But somebody has to take that initiative. And with that being said, Madam Chair, I would like to nominate Adalia Luchugatena for this representative seat.
Thank you, Commissioner Casada, for that very impassioned commentary. And I will go ahead and second that. And Commissioner, oh shoot, I forgot who had their hand up first.
Commissioner Barboa did.
Okay, thank you so much, Commissioner Benson. Go ahead, Commissioner Barboa.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you, Commissioner Benson and commissioners. And also thank you to everyone who came out and spent time, who worked really hard. I, I appreciate you just stepping up and stepping in and being brave. I, you know, I also, like, I, I mentioned a little bit, right? But what's important to me is that I get to work at the state legislature every year for the last twelve years. And I get to see where folks, where things fall, who works hard. And, and I get to see who gets stuff passed because they're working hard, because they're working across the aisle, because they're gaining votes. And I can say that I've worked directly with two people on this, which is Bunny Benton Cruz and Michelle Peacock. And I have seen Bunny work directly with community, communities that some people may never want to even talk to. And she's pulled them up and out, she's helped them out, and she's made a difference in so many people's lives. When I think about what the legislature has and doesn't have, it is missing a voice as strong as Bunny's, who's going to fight for every single one of us. And I know it because I've seen it. I've seen her do it time and time again. So I would, Commissioner, Madam Chair, like to nominate Bunny Benton Cruz to the, for this process. And I'm proud to think of her being able to fill that seat and really being able to represent our communities in ways that nobody, not one person in that legislature that I know very well could do today. So thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Barboa, for that very heartfelt tribute. And I am happy to second that nomination. And Commissioner Benson?
Thank you, Madam Chair. And thank you all of the applicants. You've earned my respect and this does take a lot of courage to be in front of the firing squad like this. That is a unique perspective in terms of running for an office that you don't have to stand in front of, you know, a hundred people in the knock-on-one door. So thank you all for your obvious commitment to our community and your heart to serve. So I'd like to nominate somebody. The, you know, just listening to everybody's, everybody's perspective and, and listening to my own constituents, what I've seen is we do need someone who can bring people together. And, and we do have a lot of veterans here in Albuquerque, a lot of senior labs. And we need more represent, representation in state, in the state senate or house. As well as, I think we need more business perspective as well. The government is our largest employer and I think we all would like more jobs here. And there's only so many jobs the government can add, so we need more industry. And so we've got a candidate here with thirty years of military experience, who's also been executive in private industry, who has also knocked on doors and who has lost an election. I think there's a lot of lessons to learn in, in losing just as well as winning. And so I'd like to nominate Tom Stoll for your consideration.
Thank you very much. Would anybody like to second that?
I'll second that.
Great. Thank you so much, Commissioner Casada. And Commissioner Barboa, I see your hand is up.
Yes, thank you again, Madam Chair and members of the commission. As I mentioned, I'm, you know, I feel that so much has been left behind in our politics. And we've mentioned throughout this process how, you know, two-party systems don't work for all of us. And when we look at our voter turnout, that's evident. So I'm again excited to have clear working relationships with Michelle Peacock. I have seen her and as a, I called on her when I first got into this office and asked her, hey, can you let me know what the veterans are doing for behavioral health folks? She got a whole team together and I learned some of the most and made direct connections with some of the most important folks that are working on the streets with our veterans, getting folks off of recovery, out into recovery, off of the streets, sheltered, cared for. And really what came across to me that day, even though the years I know of Michelle working with her, is that she made them lead with love, right? And they, they're in this work and under her command, they knew that they could lead with love and that they could give the best service, treat those veterans that are on the streets or that are suffering with trauma and addiction and, and can't get jobs, that they could treat them with the kind of care that the president would receive because they were under Michelle's command and that they knew that they, that they could do that. And that, that's the kind of resource that she would want. I think right now, coming out of the pandemic, right? We heard and saw nurses celebrated on the daily. And when we're looking right now, we have a frontline worker right in front of us who was in the frontlines, not only in wartime, but throughout this pandemic with our veterans in the hospitals here in our state. So I'm proud to also nominate Michelle Peacock for this process and for your consideration. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Barboa. Okay, Commissioner Casada seconds that. Any other nominations from the floor? Commissioner Barboa, you still have your hand up or it's up again? Okay, so it looks like that is the list of nominees. One thing that I want to say before we proceed is that I know we, we appreciate all these candidates. And I just want to give a shout out to all the people of House District twenty-eight. I think it's probably got to be one of the most engaged districts in Burnley County. We've gotten so much feedback on this appointment. And, you know, just really appreciating, House District twenty-eight, there's, there's ninety-eight people now participating in this meeting. We had ninety-nine and I was really hoping one more person would get on to break a hundred. But I just really appreciate, you know, how, just how engaged our communities are. I just want to give a shout out to that and I, because that is in my commission district, it's just, you know, heart-wrenching for me to have to make, you know, to vote, to actually make a decision. But I, I have heard, you know, clearly from my district. So, so how this is going to work, Commissioner Benson?
Madam Chair, please proceed. You may answer my question right now. How is this going to work?
I was just about to answer your question because I'm District Five, you're District Four. So I have like this psychic connection that like goes over the line of our district. So I'm going to ask, I'm going to answer that right now. How, how this has traditionally worked in my experience, I've been through three Um, how, how this has traditionally worked in my experience, I've been through three of these appointment meetings before. And so this is, the procedure we followed was to vote on each candidate, each applicant who has got a nomination and a second. When we get one candidate that reaches a majority of votes from the commission, and that's, so that's three commissioners, then that person, it wins the appointment. And we, we do not then go down the list and vote on more. So the first one to achieve that three votes is the person who wins the appointment. Okay, Commissioner Benson?
Thank you, Madam Chair. So this is, uh, your third, uh, opportunity. This is my first. So do we have one vote? Uh, or do we, we've got five candidates. We have five commissioners. So what's the, you know, sequence of events?
Okay, so we, we start from the first nomination and then all the commissioners present will vote on that nomination. And so as we go down the list, yeah, you can vote, again, each commissioner has to vote a yes or a no on each candidate until we get to the three yeses. Is that answering your question? So you can, you can vote yes on all the candidates if you want. You can vote no on all the candidates. But as soon as we reach that three commissioner mark, that person gets the appointment. And there's, then there's no more voting. That, that's it then.
Thank you, Madam Chair. What if we get through all five candidates and no one candidate has five votes?
You know, that's, that's, thank you. That's an awesome question. And that's why we have our county attorney here. Because if we do get to that, then Ken Martinez will lead us through that process. And I just want to also mention that Commissioner Debbie O'Malley is not in this meeting this evening. Uh, I, I received a text message that Commissioner O'Malley had another appointment. So it is the four of us here who will be voting on this appointment.
Mr. Martinez, uh, can you, can you expand on that? What happens if we get through and not one of the five candidates has three votes?
That's a great question. And the answer is it will be the will of the commission. This commission's will is the appointment. And one possibility is you just start again. In other words, you would start again with the process to see if someone then gets to three. Um, and, and that would be the will of the commission. So the first question is, the first one that gets to a majority of those present, which is three out of four, maybe four out of four, that would end because the nomination would be successful. If the nomination, uh, does not get a majority vote, three out of four, then you would go to the next nomination in order of nominations until someone gets the majority. If no one gets there, then you guys could go ahead and restart the process. Uh, and it would be the will of the commission has to, how that would be handled, be handled in exactly the same manner.
Thank you, Mr. Martinez. Madam Chair, um, I guess I just wanna clarify. So we have, we have some great candidates here. And so you're free to, to vote in favor of all five candidates, if you would like. Is that correct?
Yes, yes. You may, you may vote for as many candidates as you like.
Okay.
Okay. Any other questions from the commissioners on that process? Okay, anyway, I said it's like, it's like giving birth. So maybe this is the last push and I trust the process. So shall we continue? I think so. So the first, um, nomination that was seconded was for Pamela Herndon. And so all in favor of Pamela Herndon, please raise your hand. Okay, okay. And, and it looks like all the commissioners have raised their hand. Anyone against Pamela Herndon? No. So, um, Madam Clerk, our honorable County Clerk Linda Stover, please do call the roll.
Okay, Madam Chair, I'm gonna call this in the order of which you sign our papers. So that's the reason for the order. So, Commissioner Barboa?
Aye.
Mr. Benson? Vice Chair Casada?
Aye.
Madam Chair Piscotti?
Aye. And so that passes unanimously Pamela. Now I'm getting like all choked up. This is like, right? It's like we had the baby. So, um, thank you. I, thank you all. I, I, I love how our process just came out so smoothly in the end here. And congratulations Pamela Herndon and to the rest of you. I'm, right? This is like me getting like so emotional. I do hope that, starting at six o'clock tonight, you do start working with the community and bringing all of your gifts to House District 28, to Burnaleo County, to the state of New Mexico. Um, I, I'm so, um, honored to have you all here and a part of this process. And Pamela, would you like to say a few words? And I invite the others to stick around because there's gonna be a swearing in right after this. So Pamela, would you like to say a few words?
I would. I'm, I'm deeply emotional right now. And I just wanna say, I just wanna say thank you. I will serve this district very well. I will represent every single person in this district and I will be of strong voice for them. I wanna thank the commissioners for your, for your faith in me and for supporting me. And I will not let you down. Thank you very much. And it starts immediately. Thank you.
I see applause all, all around. Okay, thank you very much. And so, um, I do invite you to stick around because honestly, the swearing in is, to me, just one of the most sacred things. When you take that oath of office and really take it in, um, it's, it's amazing. And I think it's transformative. And so Pamela, I hope you have your Bible or constant and/or Constitution handy because you're gonna need something under your left hand. And so, um, there will be official signing of documents after this. But for now, this meeting is successfully adjourned. And Madam Clerk, take it away.
Oh, I can't tell you what an honor and a thrill. I'm gonna get emotional for me to be able to swear Pamela Herndon. And she is a longtime friend of mine. So Pamela, if you could raise your right hand, please, ma'am.
I'm gonna have my husband come here and hold this Bible for me. This is like,
Oh, yes. If you'll repeat after me, when I say aye, say your name. Aye?
Aye, Pamela Herndon.
Having been appointed to the Office of Representative?
Having been appointed to the Office of Representative?
In the county of Burnaleo?
In the county of Burnaleo.
State of New Mexico?
State of New Mexico.
Do solemnly swear that I will support?
Do solemnly swear that I will support?
The Constitution of the United States?
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution and laws of the state of New Mexico?
The Constitution and laws of the state of New Mexico.
And faithfully and impartially discharge the duties?
And faithfully and impartially discharge the duties.
Of said office?
Of said office.
To the best of my ability?
To the best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations, Representative.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
And, and that's it. You are now a representative. And we will somehow, behind the scenes, get some papers signed.
Thank you.
It's very exciting.
Congrats, Pamela. Great job.
Yes. Thank, thank you. And I look forward to working with each and every one of you, everyone.
Pamela, whatever I can do to help you be successful, even more successful than you're already gonna be, I'm here for it. Congratulations.
Congratulations, Representative Herndon. This is Adalia. I look forward to working with you.
Thank you. Thank you, Adalia. Thank you very much.
Let's see what we can do together.
Go get 'em, girlfriend. Bye, everyone.
Bye-bye.